All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. We will start this evening with an approximately half an hour-long executive session, and we plan to be back about 7:00 PM. So with that, Seth, can we have a motion to enter an executive session?
Motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the exchange, lease, and value of real property located within and abutting the Gillette Stadium demised premises, with the Chair hereby declaring that an open meeting on this subject may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and for the Board to reconvene in open session upon adjournment of the executive session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, and for this, we have to take a roll call, so we'll just go in order. Ed?
Yes.
Mark, yes.
Seth, yes.
Yeah, yes. All right, everyone, so we'll see you in about a half an hour. Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome back. It's Tuesday, September 28th, and we're reconvened back in open session after our executive session. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike, if you could lead us, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of the Constitution. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, literate, and just as for all.
All right, great. Do we have anyone here for citizens' input? All right, if not, then we have Matt already up here at the table, and I see Tom Kenvin. So we have kind of a mix of people that are in person and on Zoom this evening. So just bear with us as we sound check, as we check in with some new folks. So with that, we have a COVID-19 update from Matt and Tom Kenvin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health. I just have a quick overview, and then I'll give it to Tom. Right now, the town of Foxborough's current COVID-19 testing numbers are the following. Confirmed case count in the past 14 days is 36, which is slightly down from a high of 43 on September 9th. The 14-day average incident rate is, right now, is 14.1 cases per 100,000 residents, which is, again, slightly down from a high of 16.9 on September 9th as well. I estimate over the last three weeks, approximately 39% of the cases are breakthrough infections, or about 18 of the last 46 cases are due to the more contagious Delta variant. The CDC right now reports that Norfolk County is an area of substantial COVID-19 transmission and recommends the use of face masks well in indoor public settings. The CDC also estimates that over 99% of the current COVID-19 cases in this area are due to the Delta variant. CDC forecasts predict that the Commonwealth's case count will slightly decline over the next month. However, they look pretty much like they'll be level, but maybe a slight decline over the next month. That's what the CDC is forecasting. Right now, approximately 12,309 Foxborough residents are fully vaccinated, which is about 68% of the total population. In accordance with updated CDC--
Right, interrupt, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
What percent of the eligible populations excluding kids?
So that is, I can tell you, I can go by age group.
But it's not, I just--
Yeah, I don't have it broken down that way.
Probably 89, 80-something percent for eligible, probably.
I think that is eligible, is 68%.
Yeah, because if you watch School Committee, like, it starts on, like, the 50s, if I'm still accurate, around the 12-year-olds, and it goes up to maybe the 60s and then the 70s, maybe, by the time--
So right now, I have here from age 12 to 75-plus is what it's broken down to, and that's the total.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So for booster shots, in accordance with updated CDC guidance, the Pfizer vaccine booster shot's now available. The following individuals who completed their initial series six months ago can now get the booster shot, and that's individuals 65 years of age or older. Individuals 18 to 64 years of age at risk for severe COVID-19 due to certain underlying medical conditions, as defined by the CDC. And individuals 18 to 64 years of age who are at an increased risk for COVID because of occupational or institutional settings. To learn more, go to mass.gov/covidbooster. And to get a vaccine, you can also use the VaxFinder tool, vaxfinder.mass.gov for a full list of locations to receive the booster. With that, I'll give it to Tom.
Thanks, Matt. So just to follow on what Matt was saying--
One second. We just, we can't hear you, Tom. Mr. Beck, do you mind just turning Tom up a little in the room? Thank you. Sorry about that, Tom.
That's okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Matt. Just to follow on the introduction with the numbers, we have seen pretty much a plateau and a slight decline over the last three weeks. So now we are at about a 2.15% positivity rate for the cases in Foxborough. And as Matt had mentioned, Norfolk County is still at high risk, and we are, in Foxborough, pretty much on par within a percentage point of the vaccination rates, so that's 68%. One of the interesting things, it started coming, crunching the numbers, a little over the last 1,000 cases, so we were looking at the different breakthrough cases and which vaccines were actually affected. We saw 124 cases of breakthrough Moderna cases, 79 with the Pfizer, and 18 associated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Interestingly, the breakthrough cases are determined as being a positive case in a vaccine individual 14 days after the second shot, or in the case of Johnson &amp; Johnson, the first shot. We have noticed an uptick in some of the severity of illnesses requiring ambulance transports out of the urgent care at a place, and a few other local addresses in town, where we've noticed folks that have been complaining of illnesses. However, the vast majority of folks that have been vaccinated are basically complaining of flu-like, or I should say, head cold-like symptoms, consisting of headaches and runny noses. So, again, it really requires vigilance on the part of someone who may feel symptomatic, whether it's a cold versus allergies, to be very vigilant and aware, self-aware of the situations and who they may have come in contact with. And it's also important to recall that the vaccines are really meant to just prevent serious illness and death, and that breakthrough infections are not that uncommon. It's more of the fact that we want to make sure that folks aren't that sick when they get infected. So other than that, I think the information that Matt provided is pretty thorough, and nothing else report.
All right, great. So we had asked these gentlemen just to come in. We haven't heard an update in a while, just here an update about Foxborough. It seems like things are hopefully plateauing. Do we know, are there any more spikes anticipated? Or, I mean, I know you never know what's going to happen, but--
Hopefully not. Hopefully, you know, this is the light at the end of the tunnel, and hopefully it slowly declines from here. Fingers crossed, you never know. But, again, if things do change, we will let you know. And also, you can always track the numbers on the website. I post the COVID-19 dashboard on the webpage, and it tracks weekly the numbers straight from the MassDPH website, so you can look at them yourself, Foxborough-specific numbers.
Matt, did you give a percentage of Delta cases? I thought I heard that, and that's the first I'd ever heard of a split between--
So it's not, it's, so they, CDC basically does a breakdown, and they say, you know, how much of the COVID-19 cases in an area do they think, you know, is it the Alpha strain? Is it the Beta-Delta? 99% is Delta strain in this area, right?
That's what I thought, and I thought I heard a different number, but that makes more sense. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So talk to us a little bit about flu shots, too. Now, are we doing any clinics or anything specific in town outside of the norm? I know I see them in other towns. Any early talks or anything to report?
We just conducted our first flu clinic at the Employee Health Fair last Thursday. We had a public safety flu clinic scheduled for October 15th, and we had a senior center flu clinic scheduled on the 22nd of October. So we are working through that now in conjunction with the need, the community need.
Okay, great. Any other questions? No? I think that's it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks.
All right, so the next two items on the agenda are in coordination with the Planning Board and the Housing Authority. So if you don't mind, I'll ask you both to open your meetings at the same time, or would you rather do it one at a time, and then close yours, and then we move on to Housing Authority? Probably makes most sense, and you can leave. Yeah. Okay. So since these are joint meetings for the next two agenda items, I think we'll have, if the Planning Board doesn't mind coming up to the table, I'll let you guys open your meeting. We'll do our thing, take our vote, and then we'll have you close your meeting. And then, Greg, we'll have you guys come up and do the same for Housing Authority.
Good evening. So it being an appropriate time, we will open the Foxborough Planning Board Public Meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I think you have someone on Zoom, so do you guys need a roll call, or is she gone?
Nope, I'm still here.
Yep, so I think you guys, yeah.
That would be Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
All right, great. So now that that meeting's open, let us know what you're here for tonight.
So we are, we are here to ask to jointly appoint a new alternative member, associate member. John Rhodes, who was a long-term associate member, has tendered his resignation. He's retired, and I think he wants to be fully retired at this point. And Tom Murphy graciously, you know, volunteered to come in. He interviewed with the Board, and we feel confident that he would do a fine job. So based on the way the regulations are, all of us have to appoint together.
All right, great. Any questions from the Board? So, Tom, do you step down from economic development?
No.
No, he can be on both. Oh, that's why I wasn't sure. He can be on both. Okay. And I have to say, Tom is one of those people in town, when I think about, like, someone who steps up and gets stuff done, you know, I think of Tom. So I'm really glad to see Tom joining another board and us roping him in further. So, thank you, Tom. Absolutely. I've known him for a long time. Yep. All right, so you guys have already-- Both Boards are lucky. You guys have already taken your vote, as I understand, at Planning Board, so we're just looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Murphy, and then we'll have them wrap their meeting, and then we'll rinse and repeat with Housing Authority.
Motion to approve Tom Murphy as an associate member for a term to end May 31st, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'd make a motion, we close the Planning Board meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, Jeff, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Ron, aye.
Tracy, aye.
He's going to get sworn in first. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. You have your time tonight.
Congratulations. Thanks, everybody.
All right, and you guys get to go second, so you see how it all just worked.
Works for us.
All right, so next up, we have a joint meeting for the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority to appoint a new member.
New member coming up.
And you guys do not have anyone on Zoom, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
We're missing one member, thought you could make it and could not.
Okay, wonderful.
So I'd like to call a meeting order of the Foxborough Housing Authority. All those in favor will do a roll call. Kevin?
Yes, or aye.
Aye, Sue.
And Greg, aye. Great. So we have a quorum, and we're ready to begin.
All right, and you have already taken your vote as well in your own meeting?
We have.
Okay.
We had it at our last meeting. I didn't know if we wanted to introduce, but part of what is going on here is this new tenant member of our Housing Authority is required by DHCD. For many of you knew Tom Kelly passed away, so we had a vacancy there. And so we followed the protocol that Bob Cutler, we put notification to all the Housing Authority residents. Out of the residents, we got four applications. When we did our interviews, one of the applicants withdrew her name from it, and so we did three interviews and decided upon Heather Koneska. Did I pronounce that right? Oh, geez, I've been practicing. So a little brief history of Heather. She's been a resident of the Housing Authority for the last six years. She lives in a duplex off of Will Street in Foxborough. She's a single parent, a mother of three, ages from 11 to 18-year-old. She homeschools her two youngest children, and her oldest 18-year-old son has a rare genetic disorder called Phalen McDermott Syndrome, and he attends a special school. She's a part-time children's pastor at New Beginnings Church in Taunton. She has a Laurel Arts degree from Holyoke College and just received a certificate, credential from Barion Bible Institute to assist her with the children's position with the church. So she was unanimously appointed after our interview, and I think she'll be a fine addition to our Housing Authority.
All right, great. Well, it sounds a competitive process, and thank, congratulations on your appointment and stepping up. So it's always, you know, while we knew Tom, it's very exciting to see some new people, you know, get involved in the boards in town. So I think we're all very excited to meet you and have you join the fun. All right, any other questions? All right, so with that, we'll take a motion, Seth?
Motion to approve Heather Koneska as the tenant board member for a term to end May 1st, 2025.
Second.
All right, any further, so just under further discussion, this one's May 1st. Is this supposed to be May 31st?
It's May 1st by the bylaw.
The bylaw, okay, thank you. All right, great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and you guys just have to close your meeting like Planning Board did?
So, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thank you. And just on a side note, for, I'm sure everybody's aware that our RFP went public, so it's out there, and I don't know if we've got any, I know we've gotten inquiries, but I don't know if there's been anything formalized. And I have to put in the great effort for Paige Duncan's really, you know, she's worked as a team. It's been a grueling effort, but I feel our RFP, if you haven't seen it, it's online. It's very comprehensive, and we're hopeful that there'll be some developers that are interested, and hopefully we get the political push to help it through the finish line. So thank you, too, for the Selectmen, for all your support and help with it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for anyone who wants to see that RFP, it is on the town website. There's a new procurement page, and it's right there, you know, displayed as of yesterday. So we'll hopefully get some action on that.
Through DHCD, it's on our Twitter, it's on our website, so we're trying to get whatever we can out of it. I've heard there's like four or five developers that are interested.
Great.
So we'll keep you posted, and we'll be back, I'm sure, in front--
And do we have, just remind me, is there a date that it's open until?
I want to say we have a site walk, and I want to say it's like at the beginning--
The site walk's October 7th.
Okay, okay. All right, great.
So it's a fairly quick deadline.
Yeah.
Fairly comprehensive, some site walks that are coming, and we'll keep our fingers crossed. Hopefully, we get the funding, and I didn't think we'd be as far as we are, but as I said, the stars and moon are lining up, so never know.
Yeah, yeah, great.
So thank you for your support, too.
Thank you. Well, welcome, Heather, and thank you to the rest of you for your service to the town. Appreciated.
The deadline's November 18th.
November 18th, okay. All right, great. Right around town meeting, we can remind everyone then. All right, so we are cruising along. Next up, do we have, we're actually right on time, do we have Carrie here? On Zoom, I think--
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Carrie, everyone is really excited to hear from you. Everyone's been wanting a bakery uptown, and here you are.
Yes, I'm very excited.
Do you mind just introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about the application that you have in front of the Board today?
Sure. My name is Carrie Vogler. Grew up in Easton and then moved to Foxborough a few years ago. I've been doing the bakery out of my house for the last about year and a half, under a residential kitchen permit, and finally decided that I wanted to expand and open a storefront. And I found a perfect spot here in Foxborough, which is great. I think, you know, it's going to be a great addition to the town, and it seems like a lot of other people agree, and I'm very excited. And I'm looking forward to being able to expand the products that I offer as well, you know, doing it out of my house. I'm limited to doing custom orders, but having a storefront, I can offer more to walking customers. I can do drinks, like coffee, breakfast, like grab-and-go stuff, all of that. So that's a little bit kind of what I'm looking to do, if that answers your question.
It does. Just a quick question. So your in-town bakery is in your home in Foxborough today, right? So your business is already, just without a storefront in Foxborough?
Yes, the storefront will be in Foxborough. I currently live in Foxborough, which is what I've been doing for the last year and a half, under like a residential permit and stuff. So I'm looking to move it, the whole business, into the actual storefront.
Great. And I think everyone at home, you know, sometimes the paper picks up an article or whatever, what are you going to offer? Do you have any ideas? So like more baked goods or breads? I'm thinking of a question I heard from a resident. Anything else you can tell us?
Yeah, so I'm planning to try and do a variety of stuff. I definitely also want to have like some dairy-free or vegan and gluten-free options for people, because I know, I personally have a lot of people, like friends, family, who have dietary restrictions, stuff like that. I also want to do some breakfast stuff, like coffee cakes, cinnamon rolls, blueberry muffins, like a bunch of different muffins and stuff. I also am going to keep doing cakes and cupcakes, macarons, other cookies such as sugar cookies, you know, chocolate chip cookies, more gourmet stuff, like brownie bars or seven-layer bars, stuff like that. I haven't figured out the, finalized the full menu, but it's definitely going to be more geared towards sweets with maybe a few savory things, but mostly like desserts.
Okay, great. And, sorry, do you have a question?
No, no.
No, I'm just very excited.
Everyone's very excited. And this, does she have to do this every year? Will you be open before the end of the year, then? Or we have to come, like, get another license on January 1st? Yeah?
I'm not sure.
You can answer that question.
I'm hoping to open in December if all goes well, but it's just, it's going to depend on some of the work that needs to be done. The space has to be converted a bit into a kitchen, since I'm going to be baking on site. So depending on that whole process, how smoothly it goes, my goal is in time for Christmas and the holidays, but I'm not sure.
I just feel bad, because this license is only good until December 31st, so--
I know.
Katie's on Zoom, she may be able to answer.
You're on mute, Katie.
Apologies, it's Katie. Yeah, so once Carrie goes through for her approval tonight, should the Board approve, she'll just be part of the end-of-the-year renewal for calendar year 2022, so she wouldn't be coming in person.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Carrie, what do you hope your hours are going to be, and what days of the week?
Right now, I'm planning on Sunday through Friday. Sunday and Friday may have shorter hours, but Monday through Friday, at least like earlier in the morning, maybe like 7:00 AM. That way, if people are going on their way to work and they want to get a coffee, or, you know, muffin, cinnamon roll, coffee cake, whatever, on their commute, they can come in. I'm probably closing around 5:00 or 6:00 PM, so not like too late into the evening.
Thank you.
And then, just for everyone's knowledge, from what I understand, and correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, but I think that there is a warrant article that kind of ties into not having to have a site plan review, and you're changing the use of something in the AFCOD district, too, that's also on the special town meeting warrant, that I think came out of this application as well, if I'm correct?
There is something there. I don't know the exact details of it, though. That would be a better question for--
So the district that you're in is an overlay district, and from what I understand, a site plan review would have to be, would be needed to change the use, you know, from insurance to a bakery. So this piece on the town meeting article is going to make it easier for people that are in this district, you know? If she's just remodeling and changing the business, it'll be a step that'll be taken out of the process to make it a little bit easier.
Yes, Leah, you are correct.
You're correct.
Sorry, Bill.
Paige will do a much better job at explaining it at AdCom tomorrow, I'm sure, but--
Right.
All right, great. So any other questions? Nothing but excitement? I think we're ready, ready for a vote.
Motion?
Yes, sorry, motion.
Motion to approve a common victualer's license for sweetness and honey bakery.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, and we look forward to hearing more.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Foxborough Country Club, are you, you gentlemen, you're here for Foxborough Country Club?
Yes.
All right, great. And from what I understand, I think we have Ty. Ty was here, there's Ty.
Yep.
Okay. So the next up is the Foxborough Country Club Change of Manager, and if you guys can let us know a little bit about, let us know who you are, I don't think we've met you yet. And then Ty, introduce himself and tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Sure. So I'm Luke Corangelo, I'm a resident of Foxborough. I've been here about 22 years. I've been a member at Foxborough Country Club for about 18 years. I'm currently the Vice President of the Club. I also have responsibilities for the House, and a couple of kids in the school. How much do you need to know?
No, no, that's just--
Okay.
That's good.
I pay my taxes, you know? Maybe Ty, if you want to, just give me your background as well?
Yes, hi, my name's Ty Cosgrove. Recently moved here from Cape Cod, so I moved transplant to the area, but just started up at Foxborough Country Club in August, and excited to be there, great club, and excited to be a part of it. And, you know, I've been in the golf industry, restaurant industry for almost 20 years, so found a good spot and happy to be here.
So that was going to be one of my first questions, was I thought I saw Harwich somewhere, so you're not commuting from the Cape? You're closer now, okay?
Yep.
A little bit closer, yes.
Okay.
I think you're Warwick, Ty, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so Warwick Island.
All right, and, you know, we may have some questions, just because I think--
Absolutely.
I think this is maybe the fourth change that we've seen.
Sure.
And I understand you guys are a club licensed, it's a little bit different. I think we're definitely all patient, but we'd just like to hear a little bit more about, you know, your plan for some stability around this position.
So probably the best way to sum it up is with COVID, we had to, we had lost our business manager, house manager, pre-COVID, and we chose not to fill that position just based on COVID alone, because we weren't sure if we'd even be able to open. So we put it in the name, we had to put the liquor license in somebody's name, so we put it in a, a member of the House Committee that year, just to get us through. Then after Tracy came in, we basically, we moved the license over to Tracy for the start of this year, I believe. Tracy has since left the, left Foxborough Country Club for a different job. I mean, at least most industries, even my, you know, my full-time job. I'm, there's turnover, a lot of turnover right now in general, I think, in the workplace. So she left for another, another position, doing something, you know, different, not even in the golf industry. So she decided to make a change. So Ty has now come in as our, as our business manager. It's actually an elevated position, more responsibility, so he's overseeing the general operations of the clubhouse. So we apologize for the, definitely apologize for the number of people on the liquor license. Not normal, I would say, but based on the fact that we weren't sure where we were going to be with COVID and being able to operate in general, we did not fill that role, because it is a significant expense to carry that when you have no business coming into the, into the house side of things, so. But we expect to have stability going forward. You know, Ty has proven himself already in the first few months getting us on board. We've thrown a lot at him, he's done a great job with it, so.
So I'll say, you know, just I think Tracy left in July, so I think you guys have been, I don't know when Ty came, but maybe two months or so. So just I, I'll reinforce how important it is to get to us quickly, you know, get, get everything in and hopefully Ty is here to stay and we, we see Ty and, and he's not going anywhere. But I'm sure the board may have other questions. So I'll turn it over to you guys if anyone has any questions about the application for Ty.
Yeah, just reiterate, you know, what you said, the continuity of, of having the same person. And is the liquor license also going in his name?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I mean, COVID has just kind of uprooted everything and how, how, you know, things are, have been run. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure Ty will be great. Um, yeah, I mean, I just, we don't see you guys again for another, another switch, you know? I mean, just for you guys.
Yeah.
It's not that, that people leave, they take other positions, but, um, you know, being in the restaurant business, you know, working myself, it's, you know, it's to, to, to get everybody's on board, what the rules, especially when you're serving alcohol.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, so I mean, I, I wish Ty good luck and, um, you know.
So our bar, our bar manager is staying. Uh, we thought about putting it in, in her name, you know, over the summer. But then we, we started a, and then, you know, a search for a new clubhouse business manager. Um, and then, you know, Ty, Ty actually surfaced with our Pro Search. He had kind of both sides of the industry, the pro side and also the house side. You know, great fit. Um, trust me, we, we, we agree with you in terms of turnover being difficult. Um, because it actually puts a lot more responsibility on the board members ourselves to have to run things. Um, so we're not, we're not in favor of turnover either. I, you know, which is why we spent a good month on a, on a search for somebody, so.
Good for you guys. Yeah. If we, we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't mention that.
No, I understand. I understand.
You know, so, so it's real, it's not a knock on it. I mean, I understand people come and go, but, uh, yeah, I wish you guys good luck with Ty.
Thank you.
And, and Ty, just since, you know, Lou just said you came from both sides of the house. Have you had a liquor license in your name before? And tell us a little bit about your experience on the, on the liquor license side.
Sure. No, I've actually never, uh, had to put my name on a liquor license before. I never, uh, I've worked for people who own the restaurants, um, and had it in their own name. I've worked for smaller companies. So basically my background is I predominantly worked in the golf industry, but I always had a bartending job or, um, some kind of nighttime management job to kind of fill both ends of the, the day. So, uh, you know, it's nice coming from the golf background as well as a food and beverage background. I can kind of see things from both sides of the spectrum. So, uh, that helps me in, in my job from the day-to-day operation. But also, um, you know, when I was in the golf industry, I was, had the ability to go and open up a restaurant with a fellow member from the club I was working at. And he asked me if I'd be willing to come and, and be the general manager there. So, you know, that's the, the, the bulk of it, but he had his name on the liquor license. So I've, I've, this, this would be my first time on the actual license.
Um, what about the, uh, through the chair, uh, your certifications, um, when it comes to pouring? And, uh, do you, have you ever heard of the organization, uh, Fox Cares?
Yes, sir. I've been in communication with, uh, Tom from Fox Cares. Uh, we've been kind of going back and forth. We've been, uh, exchanging emails and, uh, phone calls. Got a great conversation today. So I'm, I'm hopefully get up there and see his restaurant here, uh, the next, you know, few weeks or, or so. But, uh, we, he's, uh, you know, wished me luck tonight to, you know, talk to you all. And, uh, so hopefully we'll stay in communication with Fox Cares. And, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to building a relationship with that, with him as well.
And how about your personal certifications?
Yeah, I'm a TIP certified. Uh, I actually reapplied my, or did my TIP certification, uh, recently. So that's all renewed. Uh, but I've been a TIP certified, uh, employee for almost 15 years, probably. Uh, so, you know, always carried those kinds of certifications. I'm CPR certified, AED, uh, physical, uh, sorry, first aid. Uh, I also coached when, when I, when we first moved here, I got into a coaching, uh, position. So I have, I have all those certifications as well, um, just in case. So hopefully I never have to use them, but.
All right, great.
I guess really I have one more question, really more for Katie. You still with us?
Yeah, give her a second to pop on.
I'm here.
Okay, Katie, is, is, is there an issue with the fact that there was a gap in sort of managerial coverage uh, between the old managerial record and the new?
There's not. I checked with the ABCC and they typically have like a three-month window. Um, so it, it has been the third time. It went from John Gray to Tracy, now to Ty. Um, but they have no issue as long as the local board, um, supports the change of manager.
Thank you.
Lou drew, drew the short straw to have to come on the third, the third try to come present to us.
So maybe a question for you guys, maybe is there, I don't know what we have to do as a club, but is there, is there a better alternative than having it under the house manager? Or do other, do other businesses do anything differently, I guess? Or I don't know the requirements. So.
So as the house manager, he's going to be overseeing your food and beverage.
Correct, absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Ideally, your food and beverage manager would be the one to, to carry the, the liquor license. So if, if he's going to be overseeing, seeing it off, then I, in my opinion.
It's in the right place.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think for me, the biggest thing is, and this is no fault of you guys. You guys are a board of directors, you know, for a golf club. It's much different than like ownership of a restaurant. I think the biggest thing is getting in touch with us when someone leaves. So, you know, Foxborough's a small town, you know, like, like I know Tracy left in July. And, you know, we ordered the temporary outdoor dining permit. I kind of said, well, we're ordering that. And they don't have a, you know, they don't have anyone on the liquor license right now. So I think the biggest thing we can ask from you guys in the board of directors is just keeping in contact with us and letting us know right away about changes. And, you know, there, while there is the three-month gap, you know, if you change the license three times in a year, that could be almost the whole year that you're without someone named. So it's really just, just, you know, timely, which I think you've done. Every time it's got a little shorter. Um, but, you know, just letting us know as soon as possible if there is any, unfortunately, any change, which hopefully there's not.
We are, yes, we.
Yeah.
Because if you, if you had had an issue, then we, they would have been looking for Tracy to come before us.
Right. I mean, so what's, is, is the best policy if Tracy leaves, you get in touch with you and just put it in somebody else's name temporarily until we find and continue our search or do you know what I mean? Like if, because we knew, we knew we were searching for somebody. It's just whether or not you go, come to the, come here, put it in someone's name and then to have a fourth person that's been in, in a year. I, I.
I don't think you did any, I don't think you did anything wrong.
I'm not saying wrong, right.
Because, yeah, because somebody, you know, does, all of a sudden you find out somebody's leaving. Well, I mean, you're, you're looking to put somebody's name on your liquor license. You don't just turn around and say, all right, who, you know, who are we putting on for, for this week? So.
But in fairness to Lou, when we went to do the renewal, someone had left a while ago and, and Foxborough Country Club, Katie, let me know if I'm misspeaking, but I don't think you guys let us know. I think we only found out through the annual renewal because we reached out to you guys and that was pre-Tracy. So.
Oh, so that was.
So there was like.
You're correct.
There was a big gap where you guys had a bar, before, before John.
Before COVID.
Yeah. So we only found out that you lost whoever that was when we were doing our annual renewals and no one ever told us. So like I said, it's getting better every time. But over the last couple of years, there's definitely been, you know, some room for improvement. Katie, Katie has some color to add there.
Yeah, no, Leah, you're a hundred percent correct. It was, um, Chris Lopper, um, on the renewal sheet was just crossed off. And John was added in.
I think you guys had almost a year gap. I think you had an 11-month gap with no one on your liquor license that we didn't know because no one told us. And then we found it out through the renewals.
Okay. When did John go on? I'm sorry.
Then.
It was four months.
Oh, four months, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So just, you know, like I said, every time's getting better, but just communicate.
Let you know, but that was definitely a, we let Chris go. Um, and we chose not to fill that role, even do a search based on COVID because it was right.
Right, right.
We, we shut down in the wintertime anyways.
That was Bruce. Bruce is on the application here.
Bruce couldn't make it tonight. I'm sorry.
How does he fit into?
He's the president, right?
He's the president on the vice president. Bruce could not make it. He's out of town right now. Um, so that's why I'm here.
He fed you to the wolves.
Bruce came and promised us no one to be back last time.
I can handle it.
All right. No, we've given you a hard time enough. I think you guys got it.
I agree. I, I agree. It doesn't.
Ty, we're a great community. You'll love it here. Don't, don't worry. We're not that bad.
I'm enjoying it. Definitely. No, and I, I hope to keep the communication, uh, lines more open with you guys. I've, I've tried to come by and, and get to know you, get to know you all. So I, I will continue to do that and try and be as much part of this town as I can. And, uh, you know, anything I can do to help would be, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here and anytime, my door is open.
All right, great. All right. Any further discussion before we take a motion? All right, I think we're ready.
Motion to approve the change of manager application for Foxborough Country Club from Tracy Goulet to Ty Cosgrove.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Ty. Thanks, Lou.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Ty.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right. And next up, we have the Craft Group. And this is a presentation of a special town meeting article. Um, as you all know, we are preparing for the special town meeting, which is scheduled for November 15th, right?
Yes.
Um, and this is an article that came before us a couple of weeks ago that we, we just want to have a little bit more information and understand exactly what, what you guys are looking to do. So we had asked you guys to come in. I think we were going to do it in a couple of weeks, but we just thought that might be a little bit too close to closing the warrant. So thank you for your, um, flexibility to be able to come in on short notice.
Yeah, so we're going old school. Is this, everybody sees how.
I, I love an old school diagram. I can see it's got color. Yeah. Okay, great. Um, Mr. Beck, can you, do you have it or you can see it? Okay, great.
Open the mic. Use the mic.
All right. So we know who you two are, but if you can introduce yourselves to everyone at home and then go ahead and start right in.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and, uh, Dan Grants with the Craft Group. And I'm joined by Peter Tam Gulston-Storrs, our outside counsel. Uh, and as said, we'll just briefly go through what the project is and then I'll turn it over to Peter for the hard part. Um, so what we are proposing is our building P, which is if you come to the front of the east side of the stadium, there was a, there's a building there. It was meant to be a temporary building when we built, paid replace. It was going, it was our pro shop originally and then when the new pro shop went up. And it recently has housed the football, some components of the football team are virtual rooms. And it is also, um, housed about 50 members of the Revolution staff. Um, there are sales staff. Um, so it's a, it's an old temporary building, fabric building, single story, about 20,000 square feet. Um, what we're intending to replace it with is a four-story building. Um, we have reviewed it with the planning board, been through the planning board. Of course, we keep following Carrie and everybody always wants to hear about bakeries and not about this, but that's all right. I'm looking forward to Carrie's work as well.
You followed her last meeting too?
Yes, at the planning board we, we followed her. So, um, anyway, and we've met with the, uh, the department heads and with public safety about three weeks ago. But this all really started from football because they, um, are reimagining their, um, training and conditioning space on the ground floor of the stadium and really need more space to do what they're intending to do in the coming years. So to be able to do that, we thought this was an opportune place to do that because it is right adjacent to, um, the backside of the weight room. So on the ground floor, we intend to make that, it's 104,000 square foot building, uh, four stories. On the ground floor, we intend to make that, um, connected to the football space. So it becomes one big continuous space and football would take 98% of the first floor. I think there'll be some ticketing, um, office-related things because that's just a good place to put it on the front side of the stadium there. So, um, we'll do that on the second floor. Well, there, there shows you basically what it, it'll look like. So, and right now, the only programmatic piece that we have is the, the virtual training room will be in the ground floor. And then this space right now, football's still working through and we don't bother them too much this time of year. So football's working through what the program for the rest of their floor will be on the ground floor. And then on the second floor, it, it goes to just a craft group space. So currently, um, our IT folks, our finance folks, HR folks and legal folks will move into this space. They're kind of, and, and this is a, a little bit of a common thread, but they're kind of cramped into some smaller spaces right now. And this affords them the ability to have bigger space, have a bunch of outdoor light. Um, and the, the ability to, to grow a little bit as well. And then I didn't bring the third floor, but the third floor, pretty much the same thing. That's for our international forest products, same kind of thing. They're up on the second floor right now, very nice offices, but very condensed offices. This affords them the opportunity, again, same type of thing because they're inside the, the stadium right now. They get out, they get a bunch of natural light and, and they have the ability to kind of expand a little bit as well. Um, and then the fourth floor is contemplated, uh, for the future. It's just going to be a shelf, so we don't have any current plans for that. Um, but really what this is, is just a reshuffling of the deck. We started with the, the, the need for football and, and where some of the craft group space, um, where they are currently and they vacate, um, football is going to expand into that. Football, as I said, is going to expand into the ground floor. So they're, they're just have some pretty dynamic plans as to the way they're going to, um, operate in the coming years. And we're just here to try to facilitate that. So a couple of things, as I said, really no new, no new bodies, no new, uh, employees. So no impacts to traffic. Um, game day setup, our, our prime sports gate is actually right here. Um, and there'll be minor impacts as we're building it, but, um, the operation and the setup for game day, uh, the, the fan won't, won't see any interruption and, uh, the experience will be the same. Um, that gets us, I guess, to the, the look and feel. So again, right here becomes our E1 and E2 entrance. Um, you know, it's a first-class building. Um, and it'll be one of the first things you see when you pull in. So we wanted it to have that kind of visual impact, but we also wanted it to, to fit with the stadium. So it looked like why it was first class, but it's been there since it was built. So it's meshing of a couple of ideas, but as you can see, a lot of glass open and airy so that, uh, the employees there have, have that opportunity for a lot of natural sunlight, which, uh, kind of buried inside the stadium. They do not at this time. So before we turn it over to Peter for the hard part and talking about the proposed land swap, I was wondering if you have any questions for me as it relates to the building or the program?
Is anything else move, so is the, the pro shop and everything right around the backside like, like it always is?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pro shop, this is actually, and this might be for the future. It shows a bridge here. Um, we're not going to, in this phase, build a bridge, um, that would connect to the fourth floor. But that, that, the end of that bridge goes up to the top floor of the Hall of Fame.
Okay.
Potentially.
Yeah.
We're, we're designing it for that someday.
This is much easier to see than the one we had earlier. That's why I was having trouble wrapping my head around.
Oh.
So I was going to set the stage with why you're here, but it sounds like, Peter, you're going to do that next?
I certainly can.
Okay. Cause I, I do think we just need to, you know, back it up. So for everyone at home and, go ahead.
No, well, my, my thought also is where's the other pot?
That, well, that's, yeah, yeah, exactly. So where's the other pot of wine?
Yeah, I, I can, I can shed some light on that.
Yeah. So, so the reason, you know, obviously planning board would have to approve, um, a building, but the, the land that this building is to go on is owned by the town of Foxborough. And we are being asked to swap for a piece of land that they own in order to, to make this work.
And, and I think this probably is actually, I'll let Peter say it in words, but I'm a picture guy. Um, it really ends up being this slice right here.
That that building is currently on?
A, a, a portion of that, yes.
Yes. So, um, good evening, uh, for the record, Peter Tam, uh, on behalf of, of Dan and the Craft Group. Uh, Dan has effectively conveyed what the purpose of this project is, and it's really driven by football. Um, the planning board has approved, um, this as a minor modification to the stadium site plan approval from way back in, in 2000. Um, in order to build this building, uh, and to advance and invest in excess of $30 million in the stadium here, um, the Craft Group is anticipating separately financing this building. This building, as shown, straddles, as the chair indicated, the stadium parcel, which is owned by the town and ground leased to the, to the Craft Organization, as well as the parking lot, which is privately owned by an affiliate of the Craft Group. So under the ground lease, which has, uh, never been amended since 2000, although there have been a few settlement agreements as to some disputes and just, uh, clarifications regarding ticket fees and office space. The, the ground lease between the town as the landlord and the organization does not contemplate a building that is partly on the lease area and partly on private property. And this building, um, does just that. And in fact, as Dan points out, the stadium expansion that was, uh, implemented a few years ago also does that. So any lender that is looking to lend money for the construction, uh, of the new building P, as we're affectionately calling it, uh, will want to ensure that that building is on its own independent lot. And it can't be on, partly on one property, partly on another. It's going to be very, very difficult as a practical matter to do that. So, um, Dan and the design team could modify the program so that they could shrink the building so it's entirely within the stadium lot. But it doesn't provide for, because if you, if you look at an overhead of the stadium lease area, it runs at an angle in this area. And so it, it just wouldn't provide for a great footprint. It's not optimal. So in thinking about it, rather than compromise the design, we thought it was time, um, to speak with you and come before town meeting to amend the lease. And as part of that lease amendment, we would swap effectively one half acre for one half acre of in-kind land. And the idea being the footprint that is within the stadium lot that this building, proposed building occupies, uh, would be exchanged. It'd be given by the town to, to the organization. And in turn, the organization would give the land upon which the stadium expansion was, was implemented. Also, coincidentally, about a half an acre. And we can, um, we can ensure that those areas are equal in size. And in doing so, building P would become part of what is the Foxborough Realty Associates LLC property. And it could be under a separate. And it could be under a separate ground lease within that organization and could be financed to allow for its construction. The town would realize several benefits in doing so. I'm not aware of anyone else proposing to invest thirty-plus million dollars in Foxborough in a new four-story state-of-the-art building right now. That would in fact be taxable, once it's removed from the demised premises. This is consistent with every stated goal that the town has identified, uh, in the master plan, in the EDA, uh, in zoning for this location. And this is the type of investment, uh, that benefits the town in that the town sees fiscal, direct fiscal benefits from the ground lease and from the rent that is paid by the organization which is driven by ticket sales and the ticket fee that the town realizes, the per-ticket fee. This type of investment is the type of investment that ensures the stability of those revenues. Can't guarantee that the, the team will enjoy the success, uh, forever into the future that they've had over the number, last couple decades, but, uh, this is the type of investment that you want in order to see those, uh, revenues continue to be stable. And this is the type of investment along Route One that the town has called for consistently since the passage of the Stadium Act and, uh, the EDA zoning. The idea of bringing this to town meeting, and we truly appreciate the collaboration with the planning board, um, the department heads, and with your board, uh, to bring this before a special town meeting in November, not only presents real fiscal benefits to the town in that this would be a, a separately taxable parcel, but the organization is also committed, um, uh, to ensuring if, uh, the town so desires and consulting with, uh, the administration and with, with, um, Pat Costello, uh, as town council, a pilot agreement as we have, uh, for some of the other areas within the stadium that we've addressed, both, uh, for the craft group and, uh, international forest product, office space as well as, um, the seat adjustments that were made over the years. Those two issues which were resolved, um, in collaboration with the town over the past decade, uh, are not reflected in the lease itself, but rather in separate settlement agreements. And this, uh, as Mr. Costello suggested, presents an opportunity to bring those in, um, to, to, to the lease itself, which I think is a good idea and I think it's, uh, to the benefit of the town because those are revenues in those, in those separate agreements. So, our thinking is that, in, in working with John and Bill and, and Pat, um, prior to town meeting, we could, uh, have the framework of a pilot in place, uh, to ensure that this is a revenue-positive project for the town. Meaning that we can forecast revenue based on taxes, but if the town would prefer to have, uh, a pilot in place to cover and govern this building, that's also an option. So those are the two options. We haven't, uh, you know, we'll, we'll take direction, um, from this board and, and from the administration, uh, as advised by Mr. Costello. But I, I do think that, you know, my reaction is similar to yours. I, I don't quite the oohs and ahs of a, a bakery in downtown, but it is a, a beautiful addition. Uh, I think it, it fits, uh, there well and it'll become an integral part of the stadium even though it is a separate building. But in order to build it, we do need to finance it. And so that's, that's why we're here.
So, I have two initial follow-up questions. So, from what I understood, the financing issue was that it was leased land, not that it was straddling two parcels of land. So what you're saying is, the financing issue is it, is because building P will sit upon two separate parcels as one building, not that the entirety of that is under leased land?
Two separate issues, but both make financing much more complex than it need be. Not that it's impossible, but it would make it challenging for a conventional lender. The first being, uh, if built without resolving the, the, the lease area issue and it's straddling, you would have a, unless the existing stadium lender was to take this on, um, you're dealing with a portion of a building upon which another lender has another building. And that brings some complexity in. That combined with the fact that a portion of the building would sit on the, um, private parcel, um, makes it even more complex. The fact that there is a ground lease in place, a long-term ground lease for the stadium, um, adds a wrinkle, but it, that's not ultimately, I think, the, the, um, greatest hurdle.
Okay, so when I first heard it, I thought that was the, the hurdle. Was that, 'cause you know, you can build something with a ground lease, just like the stadium was financed with a ground lease.
You can, you can finance with a ground lease.
Okay.
You know, the, the hotel out there, um, is, 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 uh, constructed and financed on a, on a ground lease.
Okay, so it's more, it's, it's more so that it's, would straddle two parcels than the ground lease, although that's a separate fact. It, it's, the bigger piece is straddling the two ground pieces.
Yeah, we could, we could, you know, it's, it's a very good question and I think we, one option would have been to cede the land, the private land here to the town, but there's nothing, uh, to give in return. So I think this is the cleanest way to do it. And in fact, um, just for financing purposes, if town meeting authorized this land swap, half acre for a half acre, and building P was then on private property as opposed to town property, we would in fact probably create a ground lease or a sub-ground lease in order to finance it. It wouldn't be a separate lot, but it would be a separate ground lease area, much like the hotel in the North Plaza.
So this building is being built on a ground lease?
One way or the other.
Yeah, okay. The other piece to me is, you know, we have a map that I've seen in a couple meetings, you know, when the survey was introduced and today, you know, I'm familiar with the stadium and I had trouble figuring out what was where. And, and we have that, you know, for the other piece, but I'm still not clear exactly where the parcel is that you are asking to, to, you know, I know that Dan has pointed to it here. Is there, so you're saying that's straddling a building as well? It's not empty land right now?
It doesn't, I don't think that answers the question.
This answers half of your question.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see this and it may not show up on the, on the screen that well, but, um, this is the existing fabric temporary building that Dan referred to. And you can see, this black line represents th- this portion of the stadium ground lease area. So everything within this is town property, ground lease to the organization. The red line represents, uh, the conceptual footprint of the new building. And you can see, this portion, uh, is on private property owned by the stadium. This area here represents about a half acre. This area would be given and become part of this lot ultimately, in exchange for the half acre where the stadium bumpout here extends beyond the lease area.
Which, which you can actually start to see right here.
And you guys are paying taxes on that piece today?
We are.
Okay.
And, and, um, I think this was circulated to you.
Yeah, that's the one though, that I'm very familiar with the stadium. I still, without having roads or directions, it's hard to...
Maybe it's, this, this second, this second gray set of boxes becomes this facade which becomes this side of that dotted line.
Which exists today.
Which exists today.
The building exists today.
Correct.
So the, the, um, the survey team is presently, we'll, we'll have an updated plan for you.
Okay.
But they've, they've, um, in the last week, advanced the plan, so they'll have a legal description of, you know, you can call them lots A and lots B, or path, tract A and tract B. And they, they amount, they're very similar to what you saw conceptually here. And they amount to about a half acre. Um, and they're proximate to one another, they'll both have improvements on it. But the idea that this, this is gonna be in fact, uh, a, a new building, um, that is gonna cost in excess of thirty million dollars. It'll be, it, it can be assessed, um, and it will be outside of the lease area, so it can be taxed. And, um, in our estimation, it, it represents a, a significant annual, um, increase in potential tax revenue to the town. And then in the alternative, the town has the op, option to, to enter into a pilot under the Stadium Act, which was the legislation adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, um, uh, even for an area outside of the lease area. And, and so that, that is another option. But either way, I think the organization is committed to ensuring that this is a, um, a, a positive fiscal impact on the community.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and anything with the stadium, you know, that comes up, obviously, we're in a long-term lease, so it's, you know, obviously, it came quick and we just wanna make sure that we understand everything. So just a couple more questions. How, that piece that we would then get, the, the smaller building, I'm gonna call it, was that constructed at the time the stadium was, was constructed? Was that built after?
No, that was built after, but it didn't require separate financing.
Okay. And that then would become part of the demised property, so we would lose the taxes that we're getting now on the portion that sits in the privately-owned piece. So I think we'd need, or at least I'd need a little bit more information to understand how those taxes, you know, yeah, we'd be getting taxes on the new building, but we'd be losing a piece, you know, on the old one as well. So, I think...
Is that right?
Yeah, 'cause that, right now, we're receiving taxes on the, the shorter part.
Isn't it part of the pil, isn't it part of the pilot?
No, that's on private land right now. So that, we would be getting that in, in, would be swapping.
There is, there is tax, um, that's taxable property, that part of a building?
Yes, it is. But, um, our, and you're, you're right, Madam Chair, to, um, wanna ensure that you know what the net is. And, uh, we do as well. So, um, the tax group at the stadium, I think in concert with the assessor, can provide you a syn, a synopsis of what the net, uh, benefit will be. Um, but we anticipate it will be a net benefit.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, this is very different. It's just kinda complicated when you're seeing it on paper and not talking through it like we are now, so I appreciate you guys coming in so that we can, you know, see it and ask questions and, and kind of walk through it because it, it makes a lot more sense when you, when you talk it out versus see it on paper. And it's, it's something different.
Yeah, the, the, um, we, we appreciate that. The, the stadium ground lease just simply doesn't contemplate because it was entered into when, uh, Patriot Place didn't exist.
Mm-huh.
It was hardly an idea. And the idea of spinoff development was desired, but no one knew where it would be.
Mm-huh.
So this is an opportunity to, um, at least bring the lease current, modify the, um, demised premises and ensure that, um, the, uh, investment in the stadium continues. Because there are many decades left, if you consider all the, the option periods. I'll be, I think, um, ninety-seven at the end of the last...
Well, I'll be gone. You don't be sitting in this room. Um, all right, so I know that was a lot to digest, um, and it, you know, unfortunately, it had to come kinda fast because town meeting is coming around the corner and we're, we're trying to figure out the warrant and, you know, I imagine this would possibly have to go through AdCom and would have to vote on this as well as all the other warrants. So I think we're here tonight really to hear about it. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
You know, I'm never silent, but seeing how we had some discussion in executive session, I think you brought most of our, our collective questions forward, so, um, yeah, I think, I think for me also is just finding out, you know, what the tax piece is there and then, what, you know, really finding out what the benefit to the town would be.
Yeah, just understanding it, obviously. We don't open this lease often, we don't do this very often. We wanna make sure, you know, we dot our i's and cross our t's and understand what we're, you know, bringing forward to town meeting to ask, to ask the voters to take a look at. So I think it's, it's good for us as a board, but also good for those watching at home to be able to understand and, you know, hopefully, everyone can walk into town meeting, have an idea of what, of what's going on. 'Cause it is, it's complicated. And I think as much as we can get, you know, these sketches and then any future ones you have, you know, that one doesn't have any, like, anchors on it. Like, you know, you can kinda tell like where the stairs are, you know, but it, it is a little tough. And then, I understand that there's a second piece that you guys are proposing, um, as far as an access road. So we haven't talked about that at all.
The, the access road is really a, a planning board matter.
Okay, okay.
So, and that's, that's pretty simple. That was actually suggested, um, through meetings, both with the administration and, and town council, uh, simply that there is a, the stadium lot, um, has a, essentially a, what's the equivalent of a paper street, um, that provides access and provides the frontage for that parcel.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I don't have the plan. Uh, but that's all it provides. Oh, here it is.
So there's nothing for this board or town meeting to act on related to the access road?
No, no, that's, that, that would be, that would be a subdivision modification. But, so, so the two items, um, just for the public to understand, the two items that are, uh, two separate articles that are pending on the art, on the warrant for special town meeting are, are one, to affect the land swap of a half acre approximately for a half acre. And that would, uh, enable building P to be constructed on land that's not part of the stadium lot. The second is to amend the lease. Uh, and the, the lease amendment would simply then substitute a new plan of the stadium premises, of the demised premises. And that would reflect the addition of a half acre for the stadium expansion and the subtraction of a half acre, uh, for the building P tract.
And any, any intel you can give me about why you selected that piece versus something else on the exterior border of the, of the premises?
Its adjacency to football is the primary driver.
No, for the piece of land that you're looking to, to give us as part of...
Quite simply, a portion of the stadium extends across onto private property.
Okay.
So it, it, it was an obvious choice. It may have been Bill Keegan, um, who suggested it because the other option was, uh, the purchase of the property without a land swap.
Mm-huh.
So, a land swap is, is, um, not necessarily complicated. I think most people, and I think town meeting would understand, this is an in-kind transfer of a half acre that's going to reflect the actual conditions out there. The town will get the underlying fee interest, the land beneath the stadium in its entirety, and, uh, the organization would get the land beneath building P.
Okay. And that building P is entirely connected to the stadium, so I know we're talking about it like a separate building, but just like the piece we would be getting, it's all one continuous?
It's, it's technically a separate building, Dan?
It'll be, it'll have the fire shutters and...
Okay.
It'll be a contiguous walk, but it, it will be separated.
Okay.
Code-wise, as a, as a different building.
The lower building now, help me understand, the one that we'd be getting, is all one continuous, contiguous building?
Yes.
That does not have the fire shutters and is truly part of the, the stadium building?
That is correct.
How did we assess a piece of a building for tax purposes?
I don't know. I think that's a question that we need to, yeah.
My, my, um, I don't know this for certain, but I don't believe you do. I think it's assessed as part of the parking lot. It's hard for me to determine, but when I look on the assessors, and I haven't confirmed that with the assessor.
Okay.
But that, that's our next piece of homework is, uh, if this is going in the right direction, if, um, we're gonna continue to coordinate with Bill and Dan and the assessor.
Mm-huh.
Uh, and we'll be able to provide you and the advisory committee, uh, just a quick fiscal summary of, of the tax, uh, and, um, both the tax, estimated tax, uh, revenue associated with a building of this caliber and, um, the loss in revenue associated with, um, bringing that portion of the stadium, which is now on private property into the lease area. And we can do that and we can also update the plans to the chair's request because I think the surveyors have enough information now where it, it looks a little more coherent.
Mm-huh. And what year was that, again, I keep calling it the little building, but what year was that piece added?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Madam Chair, um, one question. So technically, that's a separate...
So, technically, that's a separate building, because it's, the firewall separates it, but it's actually, it's actually, it's a continuous structure. Is that correct?
The building itself is a continuous, contiguous structure, but it is, yes.
It's a separate building because of the firewall separation?
But there's no air running between it there, you know?
Right, right, that's what I wanted to make sure I'm clear on. Thanks.
Okay, it's a lot to digest. I'm sure we may have more questions. I think after today, I will ask this board to, you know, if they have any questions, send them through Bill to maybe send to you, or they'll go to the assessor, whoever the right person is.
We want to make sure that this board understands what the project is, what the proposal is, and what it's not, because we all have an obligation to be able to explain this to the folks at Town Meeting.
Yeah, and it's a difficult, it's a difficult concept. It's, you know, until you see it and talk through it, it's a little bit tough to imagine. So, I thank you guys for coming in.
Well, we're happy to return and provide any information that you have, if you sleep on it and have further questions. But I think Mr. Keegan and Mr. Costello readily grasped and were very helpful early on in order to get to this stage. And I think Pat is a very effective advocate on behalf of the town. He was effective in negotiating the terms of those two settlement agreements as well. So, it's a good opportunity to bring those in and bring it together.
Yeah.
And there is, I think, a real benefit to that, so that it's all in one document.
And I think the only last piece, just I'll mention to everyone, and maybe those at home, that, you know, I asked the question is, when you look at the warrant, the articles are, you know, sponsored by the planning board, or they're sponsored by the zoning, or, you know, citizens petition. This one is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, not because we brought this one forward, you know, you guys brought it to us, but because we own the lease and the ability to do that land swap. So, I think that's just a good, you know, piece of education for everyone that may be, you know, watching at home, or, you know, or the board. But I think we're all clear on that now, but just a little different, the way it's sponsored on the warrant as well. All right, I don't know if we'll need you guys to come back in, but, you know, maybe keep the 12th. Just know that that's the date that we're closing the warrant and everything. In case anything comes up, you know, you might, you might just want to keep that date in mind. That's why we had you come in, because we just didn't think we could do this presentation and sign the warrant on the same night. So, I thank you for your flexibility, coming in quickly. But maybe just hold that date in case, is there any follow-up questions that we need you?
Will do.
And I think possibly, you know what's going to happen now? Word will get out that there's something going on. People didn't watch tonight. It might also give us an opportunity to tell people, if they really want to understand it for Town Meeting, to please watch, watch that meeting, and so then they'll be aware. Otherwise, there'll be 800 questions at Town Meeting, because they have no idea what the article, you know, means.
And thankfully, this is recorded, so people can go back and watch it. But AdCom, you know, when you guys do go to AdCom, that, AdCom made the decision not to continue to televise those, so unless people come, you know, in person, this may be people's opportunity to kind of see it in a pre-recorded fashion, if they missed it before, so.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity.
Very much so.
All right, great, any other questions from the board? No? All right, wonderful, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so now we're going right into the warrant as our next item, so I will turn that over to you, Mike.
Okay, so what you have is a warrant for the November 15th special Town Meeting, and it has 17 articles on it. It begins with several zoning articles, which have already started going in front of the AdCom. In fact, the first, the first, first six articles are zoning bylaw amendments, so essentially would require two-thirds vote at Town Meeting.
And those actually go in front of AdCom tomorrow?
Yes.
So, they haven't started yet, right? Am I, it's tomorrow, I think.
You're correct, actually. The meeting, the department head actually met with the liaison. Yes, you're correct. So, they're in front of AdCom tomorrow night. And then, the next three, so, you know, Articles 7 through 9 are street acceptances. And, you know, the way that those go is that the, you know, once the town planner recommends those, then the town engineer would go out and do the final inspections on those and make sure that those are ready for the town to accept responsibility.
And if we can just pause it at 9, because I personally hadn't seen a portion of a street being accepted before. It's always the full street. I did talk to Paige about this this morning. I'm sure she'll do a better job, you know, explaining it in front of AdCom. But it is truly only a portion of the street, and she doesn't think that the full street will be adopted. This is kind of one of these that goes way back. So, just something to point out to the board, that it is a little bit different, that normally we see the subdivisions done. I think this is outside of the subdivision rules, so that's why it's just a portion, just to call it for the board.
Correct.
Well, that's good to know, because I assumed, so Garrett Spillane was there with a couple of houses, and then they've just, they broke through and added. So, I just assumed they were, they were, want to accept the add-on. So, is this street, did she tell you, is this street not accepted at all as of yet?
I would probably, I can ask her to send us something to talk about. She was going to even talk to Gabby a little bit about the history of it. But it does go way back, and from what I understood talking to her today, this would not result in the full street. It would result in a, truly in a portion of it. And the rest of it, you know, may remain an unaccepted piece, so. You know, just something to call out, I think there's more to come, but it is truly a portion, portion of the street.
And she told us one time on AdCom, I think Seth, you might remember this, like, it could be something as small as a curb not being finished, that would, that they would not accept it. So, maybe, maybe part of it is ready to be accepted, and they'd like to do so.
Yeah, what does it look like? What does it look like with only piece of it? I don't know, those are all good questions that we'll have to stay tuned for.
Okay, so Article 10 is a Zoning Board of Appeals Amendment. This is a signed by law, and this is, this is a process type of an article. So, you know, as far as, you know, how things get filed, appealed, that sort of thing. So, that's the cleanup language there in Article 10. And I know that Barney, the Chair of the ZBA, has spent quite a bit of time on this language, as he always does. And he would be able to explain that much, much better than I, but that's basically what that is. It's a process as far as going through the ZBA for sign applications and appeals. Number 11 is the OPEB, and that's one that we're still working at, you know, trying to understand what that number will be, but that's where we talked about back in the spring, coming back to the special Town Meeting in the fall to put money towards OPEB. And that leads towards, you know, an update that either I or Bill will give as far as the federal funding. And then, the Article 12 is a budget amendment that came in late from Southeast Regional School District. And then, 13 is, I think there are two addresses that have requested to be included in the sewer service area map, so that's what that is. And then, Article 14 is a, something that the police chief is discussing with the, with the police union, and that's in regards to civil service legislation. So, this one would be a, would be a three-step process for this to pass. So, it would first, first be that discussion and get agreement from the police union. Now, having said that, you know, this could be brought to Town Meeting without that, but we feel that would be unwise, and it's not something we would want to be doing, is fighting with our police on Town Meeting floor. So, that's the first step. The second step would be a majority passage at Town Meeting, and then it would go to the legislature, because this is, you know, comes under state civil service law. So, this was, you know, when the Chief of Police position was taken out of civil service, you know, that's the process that that went. And so, this would, you know, take that three-step process again. Articles 15 and 16 were the ones just discussed relating to the land swap and lease amendment with Gillette Stadium. And then, the last one is for the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP Committee bylaw. And this is a cleanup article related to something that we kind of discovered, that a process that we've been doing all along, but it actually got brought up as maybe it needs to be put into the language. And that was that in the language for CIP, it's the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners who are represented on the CIP, but in reality, it's the DPW Director, who always represents the MATD Committee. And I don't know that anyone disagrees that that process should still be followed, but we want to make sure that the language agrees with the process, so we don't have, you know, ambiguity there. And that's the 17 articles.
All right, so just looking ahead from a timeline perspective, the warrant is closed, so we can still amend if we need to remove anything. But we do plan to sign the warrant at our next meeting, which I can't believe it's already October 12th, but that's our timeline plan, which would still give us plenty of time to get everything done, posted, constable, you know, ahead of Town Meeting on November 15th. So, that's the timeline that we're looking at. The only thing that ran through my head as we were sitting here today, and we actually had a budget debrief meeting before executive session with Paul, Dan, me, Marie, George, you know, putting together a project plan to make sure everyone knows who's doing what and the dates that need to be done. I don't think that we've seen the assignments for the liaison from AdCom for these warrant articles, and I imagine they are done by now. So, if I can, I can ask Paul for them, but I think if you can take Marie to, or Katie, whichever one of you is right, you know, I was talking to Marie about the project plan earlier today. I think, like, sending the liaisons, like, that's something that we maybe should get on there. You know, every time we ask for them, but we're always going to ask who the liaisons are, and just getting that on there, so that whoever the Chair is every year knows to send those along for special and annual Town Meeting.
So, you're talking about the budget calendar?
I am talking, yeah, the Town Meeting project plan, because a budget calendar is really only for annual Town Meeting. This is like a project plan even for special Town Meeting, you know, who's doing what and when, and who's responsible for each task. We talked to Marie about that earlier today. So, I think just adding on-
Sure.
-the AdCom liaisons to be sent from the AdCom Chair to both your office, Finance, and us, is just a good one to add in. And I can reach out to Paul to find out who the liaisons are. I know in the past, I've reached out, you know, if I had a question, sometimes I'll reach out to the AdCom liaison specifically, more so for annual Town Meeting than special Town Meeting, but I still think it's good to grab them.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to, so Katie, I should be able to help you with that, because we think, I do believe we can get that from Paul directly, or I may even have it in an email that he sent me, so I'll check back and see if I can get it.
Okay, so I won't reach out to him, I'll assume one of you guys can grab that and just pass that along to us.
It's just the names of the individuals who are going to be here and their liaisons for each of the articles.
Correct.
Right, and we'll plan on doing that on an ongoing basis moving forward, so we make that part of our project plan.
Yep, exactly, perfect.
Certainly. And in meeting last week with the, with the Town Moderator, Town Clerk, yourself, myself, the Town Manager, and so forth, the Finance Director, you know, we did discuss that your plan is to sign this warrant on October 12th, and the Town Clerk did indicate that he would like us to shoot for posting that, this warrant with the Town Clerk's office the next day, which would be the 13th, which gives us plenty of buffer, you know, if anything should come up. So, that's kind of in our plan right now, but it does give us plenty of time. And we've got plenty of extra time after that, but that's what we're planning on doing.
All right, great, so I think more to come on the warrant. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, really bringing up something you said earlier. Did you mention earlier that the Advisory Committee is not going to be televised going forward?
Yes, so I was not at the meeting, but they had their first, you know, meeting with the new group of the year. And I looked online and I saw the, you know, one of the few agenda items was to talk about televising. And I understand that there was a decision and a vote made for the AdCom to not televise their meeting. So, it is still an open meeting, it's a public meeting. Anyone can come in, they're posted online on the Town Calendar. It's also posted so that we, as the Board of Selectmen, can go and not have a quorum issue. But if you do want to follow along with any of these at AdCom, you are going to have to come to the meeting in person due to the decision to not televise those meetings.
Okay. Personally, I've never been on AdCom, so I don't really know, but I thought it was phenomenal that they were televised last year. I mean, I think that was, kudos to them. I think the town appreciated it, I think senior citizens appreciated them being able to just watch it on TV. I'm a little surprised by that decision going forward.
Are you going to say something?
Yeah, I agree with Mark. I think with my experience, the meetings that were televised were just as productive as any meetings that were not on broadcast. So, I'm a little disappointed in that as well.
Yeah, and just from like a personal level, you know, I'm a parent, I work full-time, and, you know, we're here tonight for hours. I've already had two meetings before this meeting. I personally found it really helpful to be able to go back and watch, and, you know, whether it's on my DVR or something, to really stay in touch, but I can't always, you know, sit here for, you know, whatever it is, six hours a week, you know, to just spend that time away for my family and everyone. So, I think we'll all try to be here for the ones that we find the most impactful, and I think residents will have to do that, you know, as well, follow the schedule and, you know, make sure that you attend in person. You know, I would just hate for us to have to start from ground zero and scratch at Town Meeting with everyone asking questions when, you know, they can come to AdCom and hear some of that information.
Yeah, and just a little bit more context, if I could. So, before COVID, and there was discussion around, there was discussion around televising Advisory Committee meetings, and there was a general consensus that we don't, we don't really want to go there. They were concerned about people being able to speak freely and those types of things. But when we had, you know, necess, the, you know, the COVID necessitated that we moved to putting it on, you know, the broadcast, it seemed to work really, really well.
I mean, I know it's anecdotal, but I thought last Town Meeting went very smoothly. I felt the, people had a good grasp of all the articles, and I personally attribute it to the fact that it was televised last year.
Yeah, I agree. I think we had no holds on the budget, if I recall correctly, and I don't personally ever remember that, so.
I also agree, I mean, you know, Seth and I, you know, other than when I stepped down to run for this board, you know, we began together, and, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a conversation. I can only speak for myself, I was fine with it, because I just feel like if I'm, you know, I will own whatever I say, whether it's on camera or not on camera, you know? So, I'm a little disappointed, I, you know, I understand they had their discussion, so I guess I'll be respectful that that's what they decided. But after last year, and, I mean, for me, same thing, in being able to, I did attend some meetings, but, you know, it was great to be able to watch the meeting. So, if any of the AdCom members are watching, like I said, we respect your decision, but it was, it was good last year to be able, you know, and you were, you were there, Seth, and so, yeah, a little disappointed myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. So, I think that really closes it on the special Town Meeting warrant, you know, expect it to be on next meeting's agenda and for us to sign it, so that we can, so that we can stay with the timeline that I think we've all discussed and been presented so far. Anything else on that, Mike, before you move on to Assistant Town Manager's update?
No, that's all I have on the warrant.
Quick, so a quick question. Are we going to, so do we have to attend AdCom? Will we be having any explanation of the warrant articles before we vote on them?
No, we did for the planning, for the Board of Selectmen-sponsored ones, just like we had today. But the Planning Board-sponsored ones, the Zoning Board of Appeals, they will not come into a full presentation at the Board of Selectmen. come into a full presentation, presentation at the Board of Selectmen. The expectation is you would go to AdCom and see it there.
Okay. Which is a little strange to me as well, because we're going to be asked to vote on them. And, um, I'm going to do my best to go tomorrow night, but if you couldn't go, um, especially, um, a lot of the, um, planning ones, I mean, there are, there's, um, a lot of language there that probably a lot of us are not familiar with. It's a little strange to me that-
Some of it, which I question why it's there, frankly.
Yeah.
And I'm sure Paige, you know, if someone's not able to go to AdCom, I'm sure she's more than willing to, you know, or Barney or whoever, you know, committee it is, I'm sure that they're more than willing to, you know, sit down and, and run through it with you. Um, but I don't know that we, you know, would have everyone duplicated here and there, which again, that's just why it's, it is a posted meeting for us too, like-
Yeah.
The meeting tomorrow is a posted Board of Selectmen's meeting for us to go to. But I just don't know that it makes sense to, to do the whole presentation, you know, twice.
Yeah, and I wouldn't suggest that they do that twice. Um, I was just, uh, this being my first time around, I didn't know if this, this board had conversations around the actual articles as opposed to just like a quick spin through of what, you know, the very high level. Just having read them and having like, oh, why is this here? Um, uh, and we're not going to necessarily discuss that as a board, is what I'm understanding.
Yeah, because-
No, no, we, what we would do would be to go to-
Go to AdCom and do it there, yeah.
We, we have the right to ask whatever questions we want at AdCom.
But in a, in a perfect world, all, all the Board of Selectmen would be at AdCom. I just, like, there, there's a couple there that, um, just reading through, I don't feel like I would support. But I also don't think it's fair to say that I wouldn't support without having it presented to me. So maybe it's just that I don't understand.
And it's, and I guess I'd say it is being presented tomorrow at our posted Board of Selectmen's meeting. And I did ask the question about voting, because it always comes up, the chicken and the egg. Who votes first, Board of Selectmen and AdCom? Um, and the thought was, you know, I, and, you know, no one's here to, to kind of say what happened. I know, Mike, you were there, but from when I asked that question, it was, you know, it's fine if AdCom votes first on the non-Board of Selectmen warrant items, but AdCom would, would expect us to make a vote and a recommendation for us on the Board of Selectmen items, which I completely agree with. Um, so I know that question just always comes up, comes up first, and I don't, I think that AdCom has the date that they plan to vote on everything. I, I believe Paul said that, but I just, I don't know what, what the date is. But the intent, that, again, that's why it's too bad, you know, last year we used those meetings, even if we weren't able to attend, to really get that full presentation understanding. This year unfortunately, we do have to go in person and get those at a second meeting.
In, in practicality, I think that the AdCom would, uh, would probably end up voting, uh, after the board on, on all or, or almost all of those articles. They, they typically will hold their voting on those, um, at the end, you know, after they've had their-
Yeah, they ne- never, never vote the night that they're, that they're presented, yeah.
And Paul does have a date that they plan on voting. He mentioned it today. I just, unfortunately, I didn't write it down.
Yeah.
It might be October, I think it's October 20th. Um, that is a Wednesday night.
October 20th, you're actually right, it's October 20th.
Okay. So AdCom plans on voting, if everything goes correctly, the night of October 20th is the night they plan to take their votes.
So how would this go? So if we have a question or we want to discuss a certain article when, when, the night that we're going to vote, the same thing, when I came on last year, we were already, you know, uh, the-
Well, past that, yeah.
The spring, you guys had already, you know, voted. So is, is that what you would want us to do, Leah, or reach out ahead of time to, to Bill? Like, like, so I'm just throwing, Articles, Article seven, I don't even know what Article seven is, okay? Um, not really feeling like I want to support it. Um, and then, so would we come in, like, the night and would I say, hey, you know, um, can we discuss Article seven? And then we would have a short discussion and then vote, or?
Yeah, I guess I would just recommend it be a short vote, because remember when we go to town meeting? It's not the Board of Selectmen's recommendation that goes forward, it's the AdComs. Um, so I guess, Bill, that raises another question, that if we're signing the warrant on the 12th and AdCom's voting on the 20th, there's no time really for us to vote on the Board of Selectmen sponsored articles between us signing and, and AdCom voting. So I'll, I'll leave that with you.
So, so let me just clear, clarify that way. So what you're, what the board is doing at that point is authorizing the articles to go forward through the process, and, and, and that is the warrant that has been, so you've accepted those articles to go forward. You could actually have a separate discussion about how you, how you feel about the recommendation, because the board said, board has done that in the past, where they've taken a position on articles as they go forward. So you could actually vote on each article as, based upon what you see as the appropriate, um, position that you want to take with each other, which one, each one of those articles.
And I think we've done that only for a few articles. Like, I might be remembering wrong, but I feel like we took a position on, maybe it was the CIP one, and all the rest, we just, you know, moved forward, because when it comes to town meeting, the real recommendation and what's printed is, is, you know, the AdCom.
Mm-hmm.
And unfortunately, Steph, if you can't make it through the chair, I apologize.
No, 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 never apologize for that.
Sometimes you just got to do the research on your own. So if you can't go tomorrow, you just got to give Bill or Paige a call-
Yeah.
-and go down and just so, and Seth, you too, and just feel comfortable on your own.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm pretty certain that I will be able to, to make it tomorrow. I just didn't know if, um, you know, probably because of the, the process at, at AdCom, there's like, okay, it's, you know, you hear it, but then there's also that opportunity to have discussion as a board before, you know. So even, even if they don't come in, in, um, you know, present before us, um, then it's, it's kind of like, I feel like, so it's put in front of us and, um, you know, maybe I say to myself, you know, uh, you know, well, I don't like that article because of this. And, you know, Doc, you might say, oh, that's a good point. I might say something that changes your mind. Or, so I think the discussion, um, you know, i- if we all sit down and we say, hey, Article one, anybody have any problem with it, or are we all in agreement? Boom. You know, that's why I was wondering for certain article.
Yeah, well, I, well, I think that's good. I think the AdCom recommendations are what matters, and then we vote on town meeting floor, just like, like, if we support or not support one, I don't think it's going to change, you know, the article moving forward, and I don't know that that's necessarily-
Oh, so, so basically, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation is just the warrant in full?
To move forward, yeah.
To move forward. We're not, we're not-
A lot of the time, AdCom wants us to take a position on the Board of Selectmen sponsored ones.
Okay.
So you might take a vote on that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't anticipate us getting into a big discussion debate on the Planning Board articles, taking positions, same thing on Zoning Board of Appeals, like those, I wouldn't expect that to happen.
So we're not recommending approval of each article. We're just recommending that the, the, um-
Exactly.
I, I've given the Board of Selectmen one.
Yep, exactly.
Uh, we're just recommending that the warrant go to town meeting.
That's correct.
Exactly.
Because the, you know, the, the AdCom is making the recommendations to town meeting on the articles, whereas the Board of Selectmen owns the warrant. So you're recommending that the warrant moves forward to go to town meeting.
Perfect. And just like I did say, if you have a question, call, call Paige. She answered the phone in the planning department. We ran through my questions real quick, you know.
And, and last year with, um, CIP, you're, you're correct-
Yeah.
-that, that was something, even though it was a citizen's petition, that we wanted to make.
Yeah.
Uh, we, so we pulled that aside.
Okay. But the rest, we never took individual votes. We just said the warrant moves forward with a position on article.
I'm sorry to this board, because Seth, you, you're probably thinking a little bit like I am, because, because we, we did the other process.
Right.
So I, I, I thought we were also, um, giving, uh, recommending-
No, I think we have, we have different roles on our different boards.
Okay.
Delivering this to the, are, are we the owners of this at this point? So, for example, there's Planning Board articles in the warrant. Do we have any ownership of that right now?
I would say we have ownership of the Board of Selectmen sponsored articles. But Bill, jump in if that's incorrect.
All right. So, so you, you have ownership of the entire warrant.
I'm sorry?
Okay. You have ownership of the entire warrant.
So if, if-
You don't actually, but as far as the individual articles go, those individual departments would, would actually make their recommendations based on those items. So, the board, and just to be clear, the board has the option of, of making a recommendation on any article. That's entirely up to you. But-
But we historically don't.
History has not shown that. History has not reflected that.
So I guess if Seth has a question on a specific wording, I'm just going to throw a random one out there, Article one, does he take that to page in advance? Does he go to, what, what do you, what do you recommend is the best process?
I do recommend to speak to Paige about it.
Okay.
Uh, and if she can't answer, so Kevin Weinfeld's another resource as well.
Right. And I actually did that on one of the articles. Um, there was another one that I think has been since subsequently amended, uh, but it, it dealt with the, um, what are they called? In-law apar- accessory apartments? There was a whole section about, um, state, um, review or approval. Was that, Christine, was that removed?
Um, that would be a Katie question, but there was a one that was just removed today.
That's the one, we got an email today that it was amended.
That was the one that was amended? Okay. Cause that second part of it, I, I had a lot of questions about that. Like, why are we doing that?
Guess what? That's mine as well.
Okay. Well, that, see? Okay, that makes sense, Steph.
Katie can answer that question for you.
It's Katie.
Yep.
Yep. So under Article two, section eight point two was removed post AdCom and planning meeting at the, their liaison meeting last night.
Okay.
So that was the update that you got today.
Thanks, Katie, because that was the one that I was like, I don't follow this or track this or feel like I want to vote on this without knowing a lot more about it. Um, so it helps that it's gone, but I just also wanted to understand process so that-
So, so planning pulled it after they had discussion about, they pulled that part? Cause that was their, that's their, their article?
Yes, they pulled just that section only in art, in Article two.
Okay, awesome.
So I think just moving forward, you know, try to go to AdCom if you have questions. If you can't get to AdCom, connect with whoever, you know, the owner of that is. Uh, we will sign the warrant on the 12th, and then we'll have to figure out, you know, taking a position if, if AdCom wants us to on the Board of Selectmen sponsored articles. Otherwise, I do not see us taking positions on specific articles. We'll let AdCom do that, and then we will vote at town meeting as voters as well.
And we, we come back tomorrow if we want to, um, for the AdCom meeting?
Correct.
We have to be here in person, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just making that clear.
All right. Um, sorry. We got this, so Assistant Town Manager's update. I don't know if you were done or if you had anything, if we even got to it.
Joy, I haven't started, but I just have a couple of things. Um, one, um, the Town Manager's Office did receive a letter from a resident, uh, with a concern on the, the tr- um, the speed limit on Oak Street. So I'd like to read this letter to you, because we're going to be, um, looking into this matter and, um, you know, doing, doing a survey, and then I'm sure it'll come back to you as the road commissioners. So just to give you a heads up, and I, I did speak with, with Mr. Carr, um, today to ask if it was okay to read this letter, um, at the meeting, and he said that was fine. Um, so he addressed that, "Dear Mr. Keegan, I'm writing this letter regarding a dangerous situation associated with the 30 mile per hour speeds installed on, or speed limit signs installed on Oak Street. I recently experienced the following while traveling on Oak Street from Cocasset towards Mechanic. My speed was approximately 33 miles per hour. As I was proceeding, I viewed a vehicle in my rearview mirror closing the distance between our vehicles, a common occurrence when driving on Oak Street. I passed the flashing speed sign and began the uphill section of the roadway when the vehicle behind me suddenly pulled out and passed me at high, high rate of speed on a section of the roadway where an operator is blind to oncoming traffic, oblivious to any vehicle that might be approaching from the opposite direction and creating a potential, uh, for a head-on collision. I should all men, also mention, my experience is not a rare occurrence. My neighbor had a similar experience at the same location several weeks prior to mine. Both of us have reported the incident to the Foxborough Police Department. The 30 mile per hour signs are not effectively slowing traffic. Conversely, they are creating a dangerous situation with head-on, the possibility of head-on collisions, illegal passing, et cetera, by frustrated drivers operating in an illegal manner. In conclusion, in conclusion, I ask you to reconsider, um, or, or consider reevaluating the current speed limit, um, on Oak Street. I'm available to further discuss this matter. Mr. Paul Carr, um, he's a retired professional engineer. Um, so we did discuss this, uh, matter at our operations meeting, um, this past Wednesday, um, and the, the town DPW Director was there, the police chief was there, the fire chief, uh, was there, the planner and, and others. So, um, so we've started the discussion of, of at least looking at it and seeing what we need to do, um, you know, speed analysis there. Um, and then, so expect that, you know, we'd be coming back to you with some data and, and possibly a recommendation.
Yeah, and I, I guess the biggest thing I would say is, you know, we as a board can set the speed limit, but we can't control the way people act. And I had a similar situation happen to me on Mechanic Street this week, ironically, right in front of Pat's house, um, where, you know, a car, same thing, came up quick, closed the gap. I had just pulled out of the ahern. I actually slowed down a little bit, because I realized I was going too fast in front of the flashing sign in front of Pat's, and I was passed on a double yellow line. So, you know, as much as we can do, you know, we really need to, to, just everyone in this world now is so in a rush and so, you know, quick to, to act and, and, and be up against a wall and, you know, we can look at speed limits, but, you know, the way people act, um, you know, I just hope people can really look at, look at that themselves. It's just, it's mind blowing. It's just not safe.
Is Oak Street a double yellow or are there passing areas?
They're, um, according to the DPW Director this past Wednesday, he said they used to be, um, passing areas, and now it's double yellow. I don't know if that's the entirety of Oak Street.
Pretty sure it is.
And this person wants the speed limit increased? Is that what they ultimately want?
Increased.
Okay. Cause now we, we hear a lot of the other side that everyone goes too fast down Oak Street, so, okay.
So I don't have the answer and certainly not a recommendation on this, but I just wanted to make the board aware of this, that the concern has come up, and, um, and we're going to look into it, because I think this is one of those, uh, decisions, or at least a recommendation, that has to be data-driven.
Yeah.
So we're going to start collecting data, um, and, and bring that back to-
And I don't know when the letter came in.
It just came in yesterday.
I was gonna say, but if you guys discussed it, anytime we have those in board docs, it's always more helpful to me, um, you know, just to know what's coming, um, you know.
I get it. It's, it sounds like, um, you know, just me personally, and I don't live on Oak Street, but 30 miles an hour for a street like that, that's a, a main street, it's a straightaway for most of it. 30 miles an hour, to me personally, seems a little low. I, I get why it was probably, they probably got a lot of calls from neighbors and, you know, um, and, you know, to, to slow it down a little bit. But, um, I mean, you can drive through a tiny little residential, and I think it's, I think it's 30 in a, like, that's, that's your residential, you know, and I understand there are houses there, but, um, so I, I think the, his point is if it was 35 or maybe 40, the people would, you know, that should be okay for the flow of traffic, and he wouldn't have somebody up his butt. But I agree what you say. Like, so who, what happens if the person comes behind him that wants to go 45? And, you know, the same, same thing could happen.
So they'll do a speed study, kind of like I always talk about in front of Pat's house, like we did in front of Pat's house, monitor speed and see where they came in at and if it was right. Okay.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, great.
So, so this, this gentleman has, uh, it was over 30 years' experience working for Mass DOT, doing this sort of stuff, and he happens to live down in that area. And when he first approached me, I, I thought he's going to be looking to lower the speed limit, but that wasn't actually the case. So I just wanted to make you aware, we're gonna-
Okay, great.
We're gonna take a look at that. Um, last Friday, um, some of you may be aware, the town hall was closed for several hours in the morning, while the police department and a consultant, um, actually three consultants came in and put the entire town hall staff through some security training, uh, basically active shooter training, which was very informative, made us take, take a look at, uh, the building and procedures, and, uh, it was very worthwhile. It's something that the police chief and deputy police chief have been talking about for a while. They've wanted to come in and do it. They do it in the schools, and so it was, it was definitely worthwhile. So, uh, you know, we want to thank the, uh, you know, the, the police department for getting us involved in that. Um, wanted to recognize two people who, um, a couple of weeks ago started the, um, Massachusetts Municipal Association, um, Certificate Program, which is in conjunction with Suffolk University. And they're going to spend 25 weeks, uh, doing graduate-level, uh, work in, um, in, in local government leadership and management. And that's Mark Craig, who's the, our Human Services Director over at the Council on Aging, and Maria Almedovar, who's our Assistant Finance Director. And this is, um, in, in fact, Christina is a graduate of, of that program as, as I am. And it's definitely a worthwhile program that, that we like to see, um, you know, folks get involved in. So, um, so we, we, uh, we're encouraging them, uh, along their way. Um, let's see. I guess, I guess the last thing I have is that, you know, as we were discussing warrant articles this evening, I wanted to mention that, you know, each of the- articles this evening, I wanted to mention that, you know, each of the, the last, um, couple of years and, and several town meetings, uh, we've, Bill and I have been involved in, with Foxborough Cable Access, in helping to make the community aware of what the articles are about. Now, it's not the same as watching them be, being debated in front of the AdCom, but it does get the subject matter experts up in front of the camera where they can explain to the community, you know, what's going on. So there'll be, you know, Barney Overit from the ZBA or Paige from the planning or, um, maybe, maybe Chris Gallagher from DPW, uh, to explain what those street acceptance are about. So, you know, I think we'll plan to do the same thing as we get closer to, to a town meeting so people understand, uh, what they're voting on. And again, they won't see the back and forth, but at least they'll have a general understanding of what the intention of the article is about. And that's all I have for my update.
So I have something quick to add to that, just popped in my head, um, maybe something that, um, could be brought up to AdCom is maybe they would be willing to, um, just let the meeting, when the warrant articles are being presented televised.
I believe that was suggested.
Okay, thank you. I just, I left that one over my head when Mike, Mike said it.
No, that was, that definitely, um...
I just thought I was just so bright to come up with that all on my own.
Or, or.
Yes. I, I liked that idea too, quite honestly.
Yeah.
Actually, there was one, I don't know if Bill was going to give an update, if, um...
I'm gonna try, but thank you, Mike. Uh, I, uh, you, you noticed that everybody's, uh, I've been uncharacteristically quiet tonight, um, because I'm fighting a very, very significant cold. Um, I didn't want, I didn't want to bring it to town hall, so that's why I'm staying home tonight, but, um, it's not COVID related, so I just want everybody to be clear on that. I got tested three times this day and all came back negative, so that's, that's good news. But, um, there are two things I just want to bring you updated, get you updates on. One is the Opera Fund, we are meeting with our consulting tomorrow, uh, through a, uh, Zoom call to try and get some clearer, this information about, you know, what we can spend the money on, and then we'll have, I'll be able to bring some, some guidance to the rest of town on that issue. George and Maria are gonna, gonna sit in on the meeting as well, so we'll be hopefully bringing back some, some stuff that we can actually start spending money on. Second one is the, the trash, uh, the working group, group for trash. Uh, I'm told that there are now, uh, seven individuals who's, who's expressed an interest on with three people, uh, three other people, so, uh, so there, there's a group of 10, which I don't, I wouldn't want to grow any further than that, obviously. Um, and, uh, so we'll start those conversations, let's try and schedule a meeting as early as next week for that, have our first discussion on the trash, uh, situation in Foxborough.
And Bill, I understand, I don't know if you start, but I heard, you know, the other competitor in town, Dover Trucking, I anecdotally heard they are no longer taking any new customers, which further makes it monopoly. I don't know if that had made it to you yet or not.
I'm not aware of that, but, but thank you for bringing that to my attention, so. Um, I'm hoping that I'll be back tomorrow, I'm shooting for that, but, um, based on how I feel right now, I'm not sure that'll be, that'll be the case, but I'll, I'll try. Certainly want to be there, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not very happy about being sick, but, um, I'll do the best I can to try and get in tomorrow.
All right, we'll feel better and stay home and keep everyone else safe here, so, um...
Thank you very much, that's my plan, I wanted to make sure that was the case, so thank you.
All right, great, so I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have any bullets here for our Selectmen's update, I just have some notes. Some of you may have seen, I actually got a call from a resident before I saw this, but the skate park is closed right now. There is some safety concerns as far as nails coming up and everything that, um, they really have to pause and evaluate what is needed to get that fixed, so, um, I did talk to the recreation chair after I got the phone call from a resident just to understand what's going on, and it certainly understand, it certainly sounds like there's a lot of discussions, but just, you know, so that everyone knows, um, that, that continues to be, you know, a, a challenge, but is, is certainly something, you know, that I think is important in town. So Christina, I know they made a post too, um, that might be a good, like, news one to put on, I don't know. Maybe that the skate park is closed, just, and I don't even think they have an open date, so, um, and then I know we mentioned the budget summit is going to be October 13th, um, I'm just mentioning it now since it's the day after our next meeting, so that will be AdCom, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen all together, um, here in the gala room, and we do plan to have that televised as well. I'll probably be here in person if anyone doesn't feel comfortable, you know, I'll, we, we need to discuss it, but due to the number of people in the room, I don't make, know if it makes sense to bring citizens into, I think if they have the ability and it's televised to watch it online, um, you know, possibly a way to send questions before, Christina, that each board, you know, communicates something whether people follow school committee or ask whoever it is, um, but watch for details to come on that, and that will be at 7:00 in this room on Wednesday, the 13th. And we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, but AdCom does start their Wednesday reviews starting tomorrow, so they meet every Wednesday with the exception of the budget summit that I just mentioned, um, so if you want to see what they're discussing on their agendas, you know, look, look to the town homepage and calendar for those. Anything else that I missed or that you guys had updates for, for Selectmen's update? No?
Just, um, wanna, I don't know, who knows who doesn't know, it's fairly recent, um, just a little shout out to the voter and, um, Fraser family, they lost a member, um, last night. I know, you know, a few people who are related and just the, you know, losing somebody else in town at somewhat of a young age, um, just thoughts and prayers are out to their family and loved ones.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we have a, a bunch of action items, um, and some of them may have a discussion or two, so I think with that, we're ready to, to head into those.
Motion to approve the August 31st, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the performance evaluation and review policy.
Second.
All right, under further discussion, you know, I always have something on HR policy that I, sorry, uh, but while this is great and we have a policy, I think it's really important, again, that we keep ourselves on track, and I don't see, um, when these are done, so I think the policy should say whether it's annually on X date or on their anniversary date, and sometimes a little definition, that's when things slip, so am I missing it in here or is that missing?
It's not missing, it wasn't intended to be there, but it certainly could go in there.
Okay.
So, um, we actually have performance evaluations negotiated into every contract, um, so all six union contracts, and we also have it, you know, just described in the, in the non-union, um, you know, personnel guide, um, and the, the four people who are on personal contracts, the, the two chiefs, the Town Manager, Finance Director, their contracts also spell out, you know, when, when they're, you know, the timeline for their evaluations. So, um, it, it was not intended to put it here.
Okay.
Again, it could, but I don't think there's anything missing because it is caught in the, in the specific, um, you know, language for the contract. So this was, this was, the intention of this was to be more general and give guidance, um, to the people who are evaluating, um, because that's a piece where I think we, uh, we've just in the last few years, um, gotten the last unit, you know, with a, with an evaluation and then in the last, uh, negotiations, improved evaluation instruments. So now it's, what, what my intention was with this was to use this as, as the umbrella that all other evaluation instruments and programs are under to say, okay, this is the town's intention of the evaluation process so that, you know, as somebody finishes their, um, their, um, probationary period or the, you know, on an annual basis, and really the biggest thing is, you know, uh, that, that people shouldn't be surprised with their evaluations, and it's, it's a dialogue process and it's a, it's a chance to set goals and to, you know, um, to evaluate the, the, the good and the bad. All that being said, we could certainly put it, put that in, in here, um, it doesn't hurt it to put in one more place. Um, and, and, in general, it would be, other than the four contracts, um, it would be at the end of a six-month probationary period, um, you know, unless somebody's probationary period has been extended another six months, um, and then the other one would be, you know, in June.
Okay.
So May 15 to Ju, June 15 is, you know, self-evaluations and then, and then the supervisory evaluations. I certainly could put that in there.
Yeah, and I think if this is a tool for reviewers, you know, that's helpful to have in there, but it's just as per contract. And then the only other thing that I don't see in here is it's great if everyone does evaluations, but there's no direction in here for what, what do they do with the evaluation? Because that can become critical down the road, you know, whatever happens over the course of someone's employment. So there's no directions in here that, that I see, whether they store it in a file, in a drawer, if they send it to HR, if it's on a tool. I know we used to use a tool and we're away from that, so I think we have a little bit more risk associated with making sure that these are filed away properly in case they're ever needed in the future.
Sure. Yeah, we do have a process for that, those are locked and, and filed and kept in, in HR, and I can put that in there as well.
Yeah, I think if the, if this is meant to really be direction for the evaluator, those are just two important pieces that I didn't see here.
Sure, no problem.
All right, so we took a motion, second, all those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, next one is the 99 Restaurant.
Motion to approve the change of officer from Goodlow M. Partey to Wendy Harkness for 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC and 99 West LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the conditions for the 119 Moore Street Local Initiative Program.
Second.
All right, under further discussion, so this is the conditions letter that was drafted that has been circulated to the board, you know, draft conditions did go out before we took that vote. There's been a number of conversations between Stephanie, Bill and myself to make sure, she also felt appropriately represented in the letter, and I think in the end, we're all at a good place, but I just want to let everyone know, you know, that there was a lot more conversations that went into that and getting it developed and really, really being collaborative and, and working together, so.
Yeah, and I, um, just so I don't want you to be surprised, um, my, um, I'm not going to talk about it, but just one of the points I had wanted, some wordage that I had given, and, um, you know, like Lisa, we went back and forth and, um, probably my biggest reason why I didn't support the project, um, didn't get included in, um, in what the opposition was, and so for, for that reason, I'm not going to vote in favor of the letter, but I did pass along to Bill and Leah that I was, you know, it's probably going to sound ba, backwards, that I was okay with the letter because I didn't think we needed to have, I think the only way for me to get what I wanted in was then to get the whole board involved, and I just didn't figure that was where this board wanted to go, so I'm, um, I'm not going to vote in favor of the letter, but I don't want anyone to think I just didn't like all of the letter, um, so I just wanted to kind of explain why I'm not going to, why I'm not going to vote in favor of it.
And my thought is this is a vote, we as a board took a vote, as a majority we voted, so this is a vote, this is a letter about how we're in favor with our conditions. You know, we did offer to Steph, if she wanted to send a separate letter, I just don't know that in the place of our support of this in the vote is the place to go into that detail, so, um, you know, Steph, you're obviously welcome to send, you know, your own letter, we talked about that.
Absolutely.
So, um, okay. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, um, the next one is the Foxborough Commission on Disability.
Motion to approve the new rules for the Foxborough Commission on Disability.
Second.
All right, and under further discussion, sorry again, but a lot of these rules, when I read them, um, I feel like we're record-keeping now, things that we've covered in our new handbook that are now in two places. So I get the intent of the board, um, but like things, you know, not every board has, has this level of rules and now this board has it, and everyone else kind of follows the handbook, so just, just, if someone can give me some background on, and I get like the title and the purpose and the powers and duties and all that, but the other housekeeping stuff, do we feel that this is the right place for this to live, to then have to housekeep separately in the future?
Yeah, if, if that's a question for me, I'm happy to answer, but I'm not sure if it was to the board or to, to me.
No, to you, yeah.
Sure. So this, this is actually, uh, was put together, um, by the, uh, by the commission itself, this was not put together by administration. So, you know, I know that, uh, you know, the Town Manager, Bill, did meet with, um, the Chair and one other member of this commission and did make them aware of their, that their desire to have the, uh, commission go up to, possibly up to 15, uh, members was contrary to, uh, to master on a law, which allows it to go up to 13. Um, and I, I believe, and disagree with me if, if I'm wrong, Bill, but I believe that, um, that he was in favor of it being even, even less than 13. Sometimes the larger you get...
I think they're at 11 from what I see here, right?
Yeah, yeah, so sometimes the larger you make a commission or a committee, um, it doesn't make it better, it just makes it harder to wrangle things. So, um, he, I wasn't in on that, that meeting, but, um, again, the language in here, um, I don't know if this is the language that I would necessarily use, I'm not saying it's bad, but this, this is not an, an administration product, it's a, it's a commission product.
And, and did the commission, Bill, know about the handbook? Did the commission know about the handbook or was that looked at hand in hand together or no? Bill, you're muted. Yeah, Bill, you're muted, sorry.
I'm sorry. So, so they did get the, uh, um, they did get the handbook, uh, it was handed out to all the different boards and commissions, but the issue there for, for them is that they've had these rules and regulations in place for, for many years, I'm thinking probably 10, 15 years, um, and they wanted to amend them to include more people, and I, I had a conversation with them for the same reasons that Mike talked about, to basically limit that to a group of just 11. There were some, some additional housekeeping items, which were not inconsistent with what we do, um, so if, if, you know, any board and committee can, can have their own rules and regulations, there's no, there's nothing that prohibits them from doing that. Originally, this was proposed as being a bylaw, and then we, upon researching it, realized that this wasn't a bylaw at all, it's just, it's just the rules and regulations of the commission, committee itself. So this is a, 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 a committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen, so as such, the board should, should take the, uh, should, should approve their rules and regulations if they're not inconsistent with what we've done in other committees.
So it's just, you know, not having what was changed, so we don't know what has changed in here, I know we went to 11, um, and you're saying that we do in fact have to approve these, they can't just vote on and approve these themselves?
That's correct, that's right, yeah, because, uh, the way that works is that you appoint the committee, so you can't, they can't just put together their own rules and regulations without your, your approval of it as well.
Okay. All right, I mean, I guess in the future, I'd just caution about against every board and committee having their own rules and regulations. I get this one exists and I think, you know, in hindsight, it probably would have been good to reference the committee handbook in this, but I guess they have to, um, you know, by being sworn in, they're agreeing to it anyway, so I'm just trying to make sure we don't, you know, get out of sync and lockstep in the future, and it's just another document, you know, that could...
And in fairness, like to me too, they, they actually had their rules and regulations in place long before the committee handbook was ever developed, so that they, their changes weren't significant, uh, other than the, the quorum, and, um, and, and in fact, um, we just clarified a few of the language things beyond that, it wasn't anything real significant beyond that.
But is there anything contradictory? I know this existed first.
Right.
But still.
Like, like I know, for example, resignation is covered in the handbook and, um, you know, I, I, it's hard to know what's new and what's not, like, one member may only, may hold more than one office, I think that's covered in the committee handbook, um, you know, we go over how they do the, the different roles, how minutes are, you know, posting of meetings, so, you know, a lot, some of this is definitely duplicate, um, but I guess it's not, it's, to me, it's just really not worth splitting hairs over, I guess, you know, but I want to avoid stuff like this in the future, I mean, I think we probably could have got away with just Section 1 and 2 and then everything else just, you know, being, see the committee handbook.
And probably they just, they just figured they wanted probably all their stuff all in one document. I agree with you full, fully, but my guess is, is they put this together, then they wanted to just present the whole thing, even though some of it's repetitive.
Yeah, I guess we just don't want to get into having different rules and regulations and handbooks for every board with like, you know, consistency across, so.
Is anything, um, necessitated by state law here or is it strictly?
Well, the, uh, the number of members, that's, that's regulated by state law.
Right.
I don't see anything else that, um, that is necessarily, um, but if, if the board was, um, you know, would like Bill and I to revisit this with the commission, we could certainly go back that, to them and see about, you know, revisit our handbook and this and see if we can get them to drive a little better, and instead of something that's, you know, here's the rules and regulations, make it more of a, um, of a, um, of a procedure on here's how we run the, the internal runnings of our, our meetings, we could certainly do something like that and maybe cut some, I mean, they may not be amenable to that. On the other hand, this, it's up to you to approve these.
Yeah, and quite frankly, I know that we've pushed out the handbook, but it doesn't mean everyone's seen it, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? It went to a chair, but I don't know if everyone's seen it, even like being sworn in by the town clerk, you know, to me, that's all covered in the handbook. So it looks like this might need a bigger look at versus taking what's here and just changing the number of members. It really might need a real revamp.
Yeah, and I expected the reason that we were looking at this is because it was mandated, like there was more than just the number of members dictated by state law, but if that's not really the case, then we could, you know, take a run through and make sure it's all aligned with existing, or that, you know, it's really newer than this, but still, it should all be aligned.
Yeah, and even like, for example, Article 5, Number 6, you know, we don't post agendas at Town Hall anymore. You know, I think that this whole document might need a bigger look than just changing the number of members. Even like Robert's Rules of Order, I think that that's just covered somewhere even higher up than the handbook. I don't know. But anything, you know, I know, I think this came to you late, Bill, too, right? You haven't, there hasn't been too much discussion. Oh, you're unmuted again?
I'm sorry, no, we haven't had too much discussion about this, but the ones that's, the issues that stuck out the most to me were ones we addressed with them directly. So I didn't see anything there that was inconsistent with what the rules and regulations say. You know, I think the issue of whether you post, you technically still have to post at Town Hall, but you can post on the website as well. You can do both.
Even like, like, changes to this need two-thirds versus a majority, like, there's just a number of things in here that may be old, I don't know. Again, you know, if...
It's not, yeah, it's not a bylaw, so it wouldn't necessarily require a two-thirds.
Yeah, it seems like a lot for rules and regulations, and it's not a bylaw, I guess I'd say. I mean, I would maybe like you to go back and just make sure they know about the handbook and cut out whatever you can so that we don't, so that we can really just keep it to the Commission on Disability and their rules and regulations than the other, you know, being sworn in or resigning or, you know, other things that are covered in the handbook.
Take a look at it again.
Okay. All right, so we'll table that one. We'll take no action, we'll table that one for maybe a future meeting.
Okay.
And then the last one, do you mind just giving us a little intro on this one? Because I know we saw it in board docs, but I don't have any background as far as why this one's coming up to us. The naming of public assets?
So I can give you a little background in it. So this is, this is something that another community was looking into because they were running into an issue, so they had reached out to us as well as the other managers in Norfolk County. And so we actually looked at what we're doing, and we don't have a policy on this, and we've had a lot of things that have come up, and like, well, we don't have a policy on that, maybe we should. And this was one of those. So this is, you know, using best practices that other communities are using, and, you know, Bill can maybe speak a little more on that, but that's where this started. We didn't start with the intention of, hey, we're going to go out and do this, but we saw that, you know, another community's run into an issue, and they want to know what are other people doing. Is that...
So Mike's exactly right in this amount, Chair. This is a case where we constantly get surveyed throughout Norfolk County. We exchange information all the time, so we're constantly updating each other's records to see who's got the best practices, and this is one where it can become controversial and it can be done in which somebody can just name something and then, but not having an official act that actually does that. So this, what, this actually formalizes the process, and ultimately, the town meeting would approve it, so that everybody knows and understands that that's the name of a naming of facility. The committee or person in charge of the facility would have the right to propose it. We're not suggesting that should be changed, but the committee who has the right over the building or the authority over the building would in fact have the ability to propose a naming, but then also have the approval at town meeting. That way, it becomes an official record, you know, and there's no controversy about it afterwards about who did what and how did this building get named. So I think that we've seen things happen over the years, not a lot here in Foxborough, but I will tell you that in other communities, I've seen it where it can become very divisive, and I think you want to avoid that with having a policy as to how this is done. So this is one, this is again, a best practices issue. It's not something we actually have an issue, a concern with in Foxborough per se, but one in terms that seem to make sense that, let's take a look at this as a policy and see if we can put it forward.
So I guess that, like, for an example, the Sam Burns field is the only one I could think of in like recent history. That would now require town vote, town meeting vote to name that.
Right, but it would go, the school committee would be the group that would propose.
Okay, okay.
And the Jack Martinelli.
Right, right. But that wasn't done at town meeting, but now it would be.
So that's what you're saying, now, yeah, well, both of those went before the school committee, and they have a set of guidelines. They don't just, you know, I mean, Dark and I were very involved with Jack's naming of the field, so that's, so we can say, I mean, it wasn't just like you come in and say, hey, we'd like to do this, and someone just said, yeah. I mean, they had a criteria, we had to show that he met all the criteria, and, you know, we went as far as above and beyond to bring people in to, who wrote letters and stuff, and then they took a vote at their meeting.
And that's why, that seems to make sense, like, to take it to town meeting, I don't know that, like, to me, that's the one that jumped out, was that last sentence on item B, that, you know, basically, we couldn't do what you guys did, and it would have to actually go to town meeting, that the board couldn't, they could recommend a name, but they couldn't approve a name like they are now.
They still have the ability to approve it, but then it gets finalized at town meeting.
Okay, all right.
So ultimately, the reason why you do that is because then it becomes an official record of the town.
So it wouldn't hold up any naming, ceremony, like, that's my thought, is, you know, like, let's say Jack Martinelli field is named, then it's going to wait till town meeting. That wouldn't be the case, it would just kind of be more the memorialization of it at town meeting.
Right, exactly.
And did Pat see this too, as well?
I'm sorry?
Did Pat Costello see this too, or no?
Yes, yes. We said all the policies to Pat.
So would, so the things that have been named, like Sam Burns and Jack, those are the only two that, oh, and I believe the, a room for Mr. Massey in the high school, right? So those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head in maybe the last five years.
We've got this room, and then there's two rooms.
But this would not be going forward.
Oh, okay, so...
It's not going forward. It's not going back.
It wouldn't affect anything that's already been done.
Yeah, I didn't know if that meant we had to bring all that forward to make it legal.
God, no.
Yeah.
I mean, town meeting, town meeting does approve, right? This board doesn't approve anything. It's, town meeting approves the naming.
Right, but they don't now.
Right. That's, okay, so that makes sense to me, and I thought you were questioning whether we, this board would be...
No, 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 like, it would take, like, school committee, like, it would change from school committee approving Martinelli, for example, to town meetings.
Like, for instance, the school committee owns a lot of different, has a lot of different schools under their jurisdiction. They also have fields under their jurisdiction, so they, if they wanted to name one, they can do it. There's no, not taking that authority away from them in any way, shape, or form, just now the final action would be at town meeting. You know, by doing that, it actually, it gets more, gives more public process to it, so in case anybody has any questions or wants to comment on it and all that, but I think it actually brings a lot more attention to it for the individual who they're actually recommending it for. So it actually, in many ways, it turns out to be more positive than it is.
But Bill, what would happen if the school committee voted for something and went to town meeting, and town meeting voted no? What do we do then?
Then it wouldn't happen. It's that simple. Because I don't think, you know, the other side of that is that, you know, if the town doesn't want that to happen, that's where the ultimate town decisions are made, is at town meeting. If the town doesn't decide they want to do that, and then it just would be that kind of an issue. But I would be really, really stretching it to say that that would be an issue, because more often than not, it turns out to be a very positive thing that people do. I've seen it happen in many, many other occasions.
Okay, no concern, so we haven't had a motion on that one?
Motion to approve the revised naming of public assets policy.
Second.
Although, if it's nothing we had before, why is it the revised naming of public assets policy?
You're right, it shouldn't be. That's exactly right. We should fix that.
Okay, so just motion to approve the naming of public assets policy, okay.
That's correct.
Motion to approve the naming of public assets policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everyone.